Welcome to the Towne Gray Planning Board meeting for April 10. First up is roll call.
Shania.
Present.
Wynda.
Present.
And I'm Dan Cobb, also present. Next up is minutes approval. So we have our minutes from the March 13 meeting to approve.
I move approval of the minutes as circulated.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
All good.
All good.
Okay, minutes approved. Alright, next up is information exchange. Kristin had a couple items.
Yeah, wanted to let you know the town counselor, Dan McGuire, who was your council liaison, has resigned from the council effective March 18. So he won't be the liaison anymore. I believe they're choosing new liaisons either next meeting or meeting after sometime soon. So we'll have a new way to contact for the council. And just wanted to thank him for his many years of services as liaison of this board. He's been my whole time here, so.
Yeah, definitely a big thanks to Dan. He was an engaged liaison, I think, for quite some time. Not the whole time I was here, but a lot of it.
A lot longer than my time.
Echo, yeah, he really added, it's really helpful to have someone that's as engaged as he was. So I hope the new one is up to the task.
Yes. And wanted to let you know the town council did approve the private solar energy systems ordinance in the first reading on March 18. And then they did approve the second reading on the April 1 meeting. So that ordinance is passed and it will be effective May 1. They did go ahead with the disallowing private solar energy in wellhead 1 and requiring proof that the panels are PFAS-free if in wellhead 2 or BT to the business transitional, as it was presented to you at the last time. So that did go through. And I had one amendment to the memo, which is just to the discussion points when we get there, related to the engineering comments about the septic tank locations on the project, but is related to his comments 6 and 7.
Okay, sounds good. Any information from the board?
Nope.
None here either. Alright, keep moving along then. Next up, so we don't have any new business. We've got one item of continued business, which is Serenity Apartments, a multifamily subdivision site plan. And this is a request by Serenity Apartments LLC, represented by BH2M Engineering for Planning Board Preliminary and Final Subdivision Plan Review and Site Plan Review of a Proposal to Create a Seven-Unit Multifamily Development on the 9.98 acre property at Tax Map 21, Lot 26-20-15, near 287 Mayo Road, in the Business Development 1 and Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning Districts. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review, major site plan review, multifamily development standards, and conditional use review.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. So my name is Austin Fagan. I'm here with BH2M, representing Serenity Apartments LLC. As may have been stated, the last time you folks saw the project was on February 3, where we had the public hearing, went over some initial thoughts on the project. Since that time, we have worked with Kristin, as well as Goral Palmer, the review engineer, to address all of their issues. We did receive additional comments from the third-party reviewer, as well as some comments here in the planning board memo on April 1. All of the comments that you see on the Goral Palmer memo have already been addressed on the set of plans that I've updated. We don't have any issues with those, relatively easy, plan notes, addition of a few details on the detail sheets, things like that. Kristin did bring it to my attention that they may have some concern with the locations of the septic tanks. That being said, I did get ahold of a precast company before designing these and having them under the driveways. And they do create tanks for H20 loaded, which is heavy vehicle loading. So this is not an uncommon location for septic tanks. And if, you know, cover for frost purposes is an issue or a concern of them, they can also insulate over the tanks, like you see in a lot of situations. Having installed a few septic tanks myself, they're rarely four feet down, where you would have like the frost wall or anything like that. Usually it's shallow, so I don't foresee any issues with it, but that's something that we can definitely work out. Let's see. We are hoping that tonight we can work with the board to discuss the outstanding comments in the memo and come to a resolution on those. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that concise summary. Yeah, so there's a few comments per town staff. I usually, as you know, ask if you agree with all of them, but reading through this one, there's a number of comments that require board input as well. So I think we'll just, this time, we'll step through each one, because most, I would say most of them require some input from us, so I think we'll just do that. Should be just as efficient, I think. So I'll now just use the memo and go in that order. So first one is landscaping. And comments from the staff are questioning that, you know, there's no plantings in front of the buildings, no plantings around mailbox, entryways, guest parking, or anywhere other than, I think, there's the line of arborvitae's along that eastern edge that buffers to the neighbor, which we talked about at the last meeting. So I guess I'll start with what your response to that is before we give you our comments.
Absolutely. So the intent at the front of the site, there is both drainage utilities, swales, soil filter on the left-hand side of the plant, or of the access aisle, have opposed two maple trees on the right-hand side. And this is more or less to not clutter the area. There will be snow storage from the driveway on either side of it, so if you start planting lower elevation plants, those might get taken out yearly. Additionally, if you have a lot of canopy close to the road, you're creating an additional, you know, screening, or not screening, but visibility issues, if you may. And on top of that, there's also a 50-foot perimeter buffer around the entire property that will be existing standing vegetation, the forest that's there. In terms of along the, I guess, the unit, dwelling unit side of the property, we propose the nine green giant arborvitae's, which at full height will be approximately 20-foot diameter and, you know, 40, 50 feet tall. They are spaced at 20 feet, and the intent of that was so that once they are grown, they'll touch, more or less creating a full screen buffer. But if the board would like to see, you know, reduced spacing in order to maybe have it more of a hedge situation, it's definitely something that we would consider. In terms of planting around the buildings, there is a note on the plan about people who reside within the units being able to do their own planting if they like to, that'd give it more of a personal touch. And realistically, it being kind of tucked back off of the street, this isn't going to be a property that's, you know, seen as you're driving by or anything of that nature. So if the board thinks that for the purpose of the people living within there, there may be some additional plantings required, I can understand that. But this is what we came up with, and we'd be happy to take any of your comments.
That was a long way of saying you like what you have.
I do.
Okay, I guess I can start. So you covered one of my questions, which was the spacing on those arborvitae, which appeared to me to be pretty far away. I mean, I get they'll fill in, but that's going to be a long time before they fill in also. So I, at least for me, a suggestion would be to either tighten that up or stagger it in a way that maybe gets the buffer a little more substantial a little earlier in time.
Yep.
And then I guess generally, I did think buffering was, landscaping was a little bit thin. I know we'll talk also about the center of the cul-de-sac, which typically, it may get wrapped into this discussion, but typically it's supposed to be wooded, and you're proposing So, you know, there's also that kind of wide open area. I don't have any specific requests around the buildings, but it does feel to me like there should be some small ornamental-type trees or something like that, like, I don't think we need to be requiring like flowers and beds and all that, but it just felt a little sparse to me. I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
I'm not going to design your plan for you, but that was my take. Anyone care to chime in next?
I will echo. I definitely think it is a nice option to have people allowed to have some gardens of their own, but some trees of some sort in this area really makes a difference for cooling and for pleasing to the eye. The other thing, I live near here and I run, literally run up and down this road, and while you do have these sort of like vegetated buffers, they're probably, they're not, whatever's still alive in there is probably not going to make it, because it's lost its woods around it. So to the extent that you could plug in some, something, again, we're not landscape architects, but something to help this buffer recover and re-vegetate, whether it's, you know, some smaller trees or, you know, native, I don't know, but something, what you've preserved is not going to make it probably, so help it get back to vegetated with some, something in there.
Okay.
And I echo that the storm drainage is going to be, we'll talk about that later, but anyway.
Shania.
Well, my concern is unit 1, like buffer between the guest parking and unit 1. It's pretty much like parking will be in their front yard. I think like something should be done there to separate them.
Thank you.
One and two, yep.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, that's the town that she did mention, also not near the guest parking.
Perfect.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I feel like, I feel like you could find some spots where there's kind of a small decent-looking tree on each side of each unit in the yard kind of thing, you know? Something to just kind of break it up and make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. And same thing around the guest parking.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Shania has another comment. I appreciate the need to not plant things that you're immediately going to kill with the plow along the driveway, but if you could add some re-vegetation in that buffer area where it wouldn't get plowed in, I don't know what would be suitable in that space, maybe something similar to what you're probably going to kill that's younger and more capable. You don't need to, you know, spend a bazillion dollars on full-grown trees, but something to try and encourage some re-vegetation of that space, because it's definitely gonna, it's gonna suffer from having been.
Absolutely. Maybe some small pine trees or something like that that'll grow up and fill in.
Yeah, something that would fill in, some, I don't know, hemlock or spruce that kind of, you know, grow faster and create more prettier quicker. And they're not going to get all big and cause trouble later either, you know?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So how do we get this one, just thinking ahead, Kristin, to a potential approval?
I think typically in the past, you've had language that says that you could leave it to review with the town planner, so it could work it out between us, based on your input tonight.
Okay, so that would be my proposal.
Okay.
That we, assuming we keep going smoothly here, that...
So just to be clear, you're talking about like an ornamental tree on either side of each unit and either side of the guest parking? Are you looking for anything near the mailbox area?
Where is the mailbox again? That was, I couldn't find.
That is near the entry, and maybe part of what us in speaking about was the plow concerns. But typically at some other projects, we've seen like small shrubs on either side of the actual mailbox, because you're obviously not going to push the snow right up against the mailbox. So that's a possibility if you want it. And then the plantings in front of the units, like oftentimes houses will have a couple shrubs, like front of the foundation, I don't, so as long as I'm clear on exactly what you're looking for, I think that works as a part forward.
Sorry, back to the mailbox, the, all the way out to the entry of the road or the entry of where the houses are? Because I don't, I'm on the wrong plane.
When you turn into the development on the right, there's like a bump out.
Okay.
And there's a little box right there, I think that's like mailbox, group mailbox.
So, yeah, I mean, something there, and then similarly, there's, you know, I don't know, I don't want to get too excessive, but you've got an above-ground utility box that's near the guest parking. That's something that could have a couple shrubs.
And with the transformer like that, that's really something that'll be placed based on CMP, so it might not actually be in that location. That's at their discretion, really, but I agree. We can definitely get some.
Wherever it is, a couple, you know, obviously you're not going to put it right up to it, but I think just take kind of those opportunities. And then what are our thoughts on tightening the buffer?
I like that.
So it's currently at 20 feet.
The upper base.
Yeah. So like to me, either staggering it or adding more or tightening it to like 10 to 15.
Yeah, I think tightening it may be the best approach where we're, you know, pushing right up against that soil filter. I don't really want to encroach on it too much for access point of view, so I'd be happy to shrink that spacing down.
I mean, what size are you planning on planting? That's the other question. Are you starting with a five-to-six-foot plan or a six-inch plan?
Yeah, typically you, I think we would go with a six footer, so four to five footers was proposed on the plan. Just so it's hardy enough so that it won't die off in the first winter. Also, you know, we try and keep climate zone for the plants in here, so the bigger it is, the less chance it's going to have of having issues to start with, so.
I mean, I would say 15 would be the maximum and 10 would also be good.
Okay.
What do you guys think there?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, alright, let's keep moving. So next was the cul-de-sac, so in this case, the ordinance requires to maintain a stand of trees. You're proposing to use it as credit for your stormwater treatment, so it would all be grassed and depression, as well as snow storage in the winter.
And a light fixture in order to light everything up on the site.
Yeah, that's true. And, yeah.
Yeah, I guess my question with this one, so when the ordinance is talking about that, is that more applicable to if this was a roadway and the center of it would be owned as part of the right-of-way? I know that we're using a cul-de-sac in this aspect, but it's more like, this is a driveway instead of a roadway, so I'm just unsure if that would fall under the same requirements?
It is under, oh, 1316, which I believe is related to street standards.
Okay.
And that is a valid point. This is different because it's multifamily, this is not in its own right-of-way, it's effectively a driveway.
I guess my other thought with this is that if we require him to maintain a stand of trees, he's going to have to use some other area for his stormwater treatment, I'm presuming, and you'll end up taking trees down somewhere else to.
Yeah, so this isn't, in terms of treatment, so the treatment will be taking place more or less down here, but this is just a, you know, we have the road super elevated into itself so it'll all get in there. It's the best approach that I can find without, you know, really starting to add more fill to the site, which, right now, so the existing contour there would be about a 218, and we have it at about 217 now, so you'd just be more or less stripping the top off of it. If it is a sticking point, I'm sure it's something that we can work out, but this would definitely be preferred if possible.
Yeah, that is a valid point. That section is street design standards. This is effectively a driveway, so leave that to board discretion.
So is this going to be like a, are you capturing any runoff in it?
Yes.
So, and then you're going to basically infiltrate it from there?
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be going from the outsides, we'll be catching it in closed, so piping that will then discharge into here and then into the soil filter, so infiltrating, getting to, it's BMP for treatment. It makes it so that we can just convey it where it needs to go more easily.
So it's not really feasible to ask for any plantings.
Yeah, I agree on that. That's a good point.
Sometimes like cat tails like is used in the filters like that, but.
Well, but yeah, that's a whole nother debate.
Let's not open that can.
And they provide their own treatment, but I think that's not your intent. Your intent is grass and it's going to be mowed and.
Correct.
Basically used for kind of temporary detention.
Correct.
I mean, I guess, to me, it's even questionable how much we can require here.
Yeah, given that it's not.
If we could, the only thing that comes to mind for me is some, you know, you do a raised bed in the center and try and do a planting where you can make it more of a feature. And I'm only just like giving you suggestions here, but it becomes a, you know, sort of a feature of the center of your, that all the places are looking at, and then you still maintain the ring of water flow to send on its way, so.
Okay.
I mean, you know, that's like, it's if you want to do it kind of thing, but I think it would be, I think that would make it look a lot nicer to me personally.
Okay.
I'm not saying it's required, but if you had some, you know, raised berm feature in the center with some nice plantings, and all three of your buildings are looking directly at it, and then you kind of, you know, maintain the spirit of the ordinance, and it adds to your landscaping aesthetics, and still, you still get your stormwater treatment, so.
Okay, that seems like a fair compromise.
One of the things I was just thinking as you were saying that is maybe you have something that is just not grass that needs to be mowed, but, you know, a perennial ground cover of some sort that doesn't impact your, you know, that is more attractive than just grass that needs to be mowed, and it'll probably get weedy and stuff like.
Right.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
Ground cover that's not grass is actually a lot lower maintenance than grass.
Yeah, so do like a creeping time or something like that that'll have some color at some point or another.
Yeah, something like that that could be nicer to look at, especially if you've got a light in the middle and it's going to, it's like, it's a feature, so I'd as well make it nicer.
Absolutely.
But I think I'm in agreement with the chair that we, it doesn't need to be a stand of trees and it's fine to continue being a detention feature.
So we'll leave those two for Kristin to work with the application on then.
Yeah, we could put that as a finding, if that's where your landing is aboard, that it's not necessarily applicable due to the fact that it's a driveway.
Right.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Sure. Let's skip lighting and talk about both lights at the same time later. So number three was this permitting. I think you don't need any board input on that, I think. We all get here, right?
Yep.
I don't see anything you need from us.
No, it was in the Goral Palmer memo as well, just noting that we need to provide the town with the applications once they're created, and we will plan to do that once we submit to DEB.
Okay, so next up is monumentation, or back onto that topic again, which.
Every time.
Right, I think I would have the same take as we had last time, which is, we would require that it be done where feasible. I forget what our language that we used last time was, but it was along the lines of, if it's feasible, you need to put it in to meet the ordinance. If you have, you know, if you encounter ledge or something that makes it impossible to put a monument, then.
Or like exceedingly difficult, not necessarily impossible, but yeah.
So and just to point this out, which I am happy to add that to the plan, I believe the memo says something about angles of less than 135 degrees. So realistically, where we'd be adding the stone monuments would be, I think, four different spots, potentially here, that's a rock wall, so that's, I think that might be what, one of the exceptions that we're talking about. The remainder of the existing monuments for the boundary are already in place, and we can't pull those in order to put new stuff in.
Right.
So it would be, you know, I'm happy to add it in the angle points that are to be set, if that works for you.
I think that works for us, and then any, we can, so yeah, definitely, you definitely don't need to be pulling stone walls apart, and if you encounter any situation where you feel like it's not feasible to install, we'll leave it to Kristin to determine that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, lighting, so there's, I think, two lights you're looking for some, or town is looking for some feedback on with potentially requiring shielded fixtures, and also the location on the one out at the end of the road, so I guess we can start with the garage floodlights. So what's your proposal there again?
So the proposal for that would be a switch-controlled and motion-activated floodlight like you would see on most every house, it's pretty common nowadays. The detail for, the cut sheet for that is in the application, but more or less we were proposed, I know we talked about downward-facing lighting, and for anything that is, you know, raised pretty far above grade, we've incorporated that into the design, so it's all downward-facing. Where these are not going to be, you know, full-time lights, there is the existing buffer, the proposed screening, things of that nature. This is just what the lighting manufacturer recommended to us. If it's not something that works for the board, I'm sure we can find a unit that is, you know, smaller, doesn't project, but I would be happy to hear your comments and address it accordingly.
Mr. Shania.
Go ahead.
I would say that while it is tucked back a bit, it's pretty, I have neighbors and that are easily as close as this, and their lights are surprisingly visible. If you can find some ones that don't project as far.
Okay.
I think that would be a benefit to the neighbors that are, you know, that we're buffering from, because the buffer's not going to happen right away, but the, especially this, it used to be just all woods.
Yep.
So even when their garage lights are not on, it's going to be obvious and more lit, so I would, where we have the power to do so, I would say, put downward-facing, smaller, less projecting lights.
Okay, sounds great.
Shania.
I agree with you guys, 100%.
Yep, I'm on board with that, so.
Perfect.
I think, yeah, it's rural wooded area, people are there for the quiet and not bringing in lights and that type of visual disruption, I guess. Okay, so then the one at the end of the street, the comment is that it's set somewhat back in from the road and.
I think that's been moved.
Oh, has that been moved?
So it is shown kind of near the mailbox at this point, and the idea with that was to have it well lit. The photometric plan shows that it does die out before it gets the road, and the idea with that was by having it further in was for the rural character. If there is a light right at the end of it, it's going to be, you know, kind of glaring to everybody in the area. With it moved back here, it'll be, you know, somewhat filtered through the trees and the vegetation and still giving, you know, you'll still be able, as you're pulling into the site, to see that this is the site entrance and how to get in there.
I think that's better than having it more projecting out onto the road, especially given that this is really a driveway and not a road.
Okay.
Shania.
Yep.
And that one is, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Let's go with your guys' suggestion. I agree with them.
I didn't make a suggestion, but I was waiting for yours. And is this a downward-facing fixture?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm on board with that. Kristin, is there any concern about it, like not meeting ordinance by being set back like that, or?
No, I would raise it because it doesn't necessarily light up the intersection of the driveway with the road as much as some, but that sounds like that's in line with what the board's looking for anyway, so I think we're probably good there. More, I think more concern to me was that the lumens for the floodlights on the garages were like the same lumens as the streetlights.
Yeah.
Which seemed really bright to me. That was probably the main thing I wanted to raise to you, which you've addressed.
And then there's a streetlight in the cul-de-sac, sorry, there's three, not two, there's one in the cul-de-sac area. And suggestion for that one, so right now it's, where is it right now?
So right now it's dead center of the cul-de-sac. So the idea with that is just to provide a centralized lighting, more or less to shed some light on everything, but not concentrated on one unit or anything like that, where we do have the wall pack lightings for each unit as well.
I mean, I don't know if I have, really have a preference, whether it's. I mean, I don't know if I have, really have a preference, whether it's, that seems to make sense to me, the staff suggestion was move it near to guest parking and, and the dumpster.
The snow storage was the question, this was the thing that Doug raised, actually, if the snow's, and I don't know if you feel like the snow storage is going to push back that far, or if it's, if it's a concern, that's, that was why we flagged it.
Yeah, I don't necessarily see it as a concern, but if, if you folks do, we'd be happy to address it.
I don't see it as a concern, I mean.
I think, I think if, if you feel like the design of it and the lighting is sufficient for it to be in the middle, especially since we're seem to be interested and willing to make the middle a little nicer with the different vegetation, that could be a good feature.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, open space. So. Looks like you guys have more than, more than met the required amount, and then the discussion from us is related to the picnic area and the access to it, which you have somewhat steep grading.
Yeah, so the, the access for it would come between these units around and up. And there is a, a small steep part right there, which we've, we've noted is about twenty percent, and to give you some context on the, the easiest thing I could think of was as you're driving down the highway, what they consider a recoverable slope for the vehicle is a four to one slope, which is, is twenty-five percent. So this will be less steep than that, and it's, it's for about a section of twenty feet, so whether it's a staircase for a few feet or a steeper incline, there's going to be some sort of, of incline to get there. So we figured by just having it the, the natural space, just grassed, it would kind of lend itself to, you know, more natural looking than a set of stairs.
Comments?
I actually am good with having it if it is not too steep, for it to just be walkable, so. You know, even if you put stairs in, people are going to walk where they want to walk, there's the, you know, what do they call them, the intention paths or whatever. And the stairs, you know, become something that needs to be maintained, and I would be, as long as, as the, as the grade really isn't overly steep, I would be fine with just letting it be grassed to get down to the picnic tables. I think that could be fine.
Chenya, sounds like you're in agreement.
I think the same, I don't think that any, like, steps needed for it.
Yeah, seems fine to me.
Okay, thank you.
You know, if you want to put some basic steps in, when you find the gratings there, that's fine too.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't be adverse to it, but I don't think.
We're not going to require it, and if you find you need it, that would be fine.
Sounds good to me, thank you.
All right. So now, let's see, where are we at? So we've had our public hearing and preliminary review, and if we so desire, we can do our preliminary and final approvals tonight concurrently, which it seems like we're working towards. So I guess we have, Kristen, we have to do these findings of fact first before we can do them together?
Yeah, I just.
It's been a while since we've done preliminary, preliminary and final at the same time.
Right, we do have one more discussion point about the septic tank in the driveway question, maybe before we get to that.
Sure.
This is the outline of the waiver procedural steps, those are the three items. You would all have to find that they meet these items, and then that would be included as a finding in the notice of decision, and you'd be able to grant prelim and final at the same meeting.
Right.
So that is, if you find that they meet these, then we can move to actually have that be a motion. Or a finding, excuse me, I don't think it must be a motion.
Option two is both at the same time.
There are two options provided for you tonight, so if you find that you feel it can go to prelim only, there's a motion provided there with language. If you feel that it can go through to final, and you have enough for that, there's a separate motion for that, so we don't get confused.
Right, we can't go to option two yet, though, we have to find, we have to complete our findings first.
Gotcha. Oh, okay, great, okay.
So. Okay, so where's your subject comment again, either I missed that, or is this the new one?
In the engineering review comments from the peer review.
This year, this.
Comments six and seven.
Oh, the new one, yeah, okay.
Were with relation to requiring the, the septic tank locations are underneath the driveways for each of these buildings, as you can see on the plans. So it's just requiring that they be H twenty load rated, and he did raise some concerns about, typically you have them under some snow load during the winter, so there's some insulation.
Right.
If they're exposed on a clear driveway, he had some concerns about the impact.
Freezing.
Of freezing, so that was what, what Austin was looking to address earlier.
Right.
If you're comfortable with that answer, then we're all set, I just wanted to make sure it was on your radar.
So, I mean, I don't, that can be a problem, I'm sure you're aware of it.
Absolutely.
There's no, it's no insulation, do you hear often about people's septic tanks freezing, because they plow over it and then it freezes? So, it happens.
Mm-hmm. I have, I have added a detail, oh, sorry, we're, go ahead.
H twenty like septic tanks under the driveway is common practice, especially where there's not enough space. Plus, eventually they will be very happy because they wouldn't have to dig it up.
Additionally, I have added a detail to the, the updated set of plans that you don't have out front of you, but I did put a, a two foot minimum cover with the, the riser tank or the, the riser pipe, just so that there is some insulation, and if it is a concern, there's also, you know, you can put the rigid foam insulation, which is very common practice for, for these systems, understanding that there, there won't be the snow. Our value on top of it.
I mean, I would think you would take the extra step and put the rigid insulation. I'm not going to say you have to, but you have your chance while you're installing it to do something.
Absolutely.
Relatively cost effective and it can save a big headache later.
And this, I will go to the pumping station.
Okay. I will add insulation details to the plan as well.
Okay, so I think we can do our findings of fact then. So I think there's three, Kristen, but the second one, do we still need to, I guess, just clarify, they already have the, they've already provided the studies, so we're not really waiving anything. Do we still need to formally find that fact?
I think it's just acknowledging that you, you've already been provided with them, so it's not like you need to be comfortable with a waiver for the project, you have the studies. So that's, that's above the, I think, this is intended for a situation where.
Yeah, where they haven't.
Something small.
It's where they haven't provided it.
Right, they have provided it, and, and you're good with providing a waiver, that's acknowledging that, not the case for this project, so it's a higher standard action.
So my procedural question is what we need to do here before we?
These are findings so that they're discussion at the board level, and then they're findings that I would put on the notice of decision saying the board agreed that it met X, Y, Z.
Do you want us to vote on this, or?
I don't think you need to, I just, I think if there's just discussion regarding whether you think they meet these criteria.
All right, so I'll ask the board whether you agree that the application either meets or is not applicable as appropriate to these three findings of fact, A, B, and C on page four of our memo.
I think, I think the application is complete with respect to A, B, and C.
Okay. Chenya?
I agree with it.
And I also agree, so. Not free to include those findings in. Your minutes, okay. So I believe we would have covered by now all of the discussion points that were recommended, let me just take a minute here to check. Okay, so we've covered everything there. So next up would be conditional use, which we have already approved. And then waivers.
These may not be applicable, they're provided as a placeholder.
All right, so first one is monuments, which we're not waiving, we've already provided guidance on. And the second one, we've similarly already provided guidance under the landscaping comments, so don't.
Plus, it's not technically a waiver because it's not required, because it's not a roadway.
There. So either way, we're not granting them.
That's right.
Okay, so next up, we'll find the application complete, if someone would so like to make that motion.
I move to find the application by Serenity Apartments LLC complete per four oh one point seven point one E. This proposal is to create a seven unit multifamily development on the nine point nine eight acre property at the tax map twenty-one, lot twenty-six dash twenty dash fifteen near two eighty-seven Mail Road and the Business Development dash one and Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning Districts. The proposal is subject to major subdivision review, major site plan review, multifamily development standards, and conditional review.
Is there a second?
Second, good.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Okay, the application is complete. So next up, I'm assuming we'll opt to grant preliminary and final. So that would be our option two.
So we have some placeholders to confirm.
Yeah, several placeholders, yeah. Starting number eight.
I would suggest maybe for eight, it's shall add landscaping details as, as agreed at the meeting to the satisfaction of the town planner, something, something like that. I think that covers eight and nine, because we're talking about some.
I think that's right.
You could probably delete nine.
Maybe call it landscaping and cul-de-sac or something.
So you're deleting nine?
Uh, well, I think, my, I mean, my, you could do it however you like, I guess.
Yeah, you're right, because we didn't say, yeah, I agree with you, just delete.
I was, I was thinking of incorporating whatever landscaping they propose at the, at, you know, in the center of that as part of the landscaping discussion, we didn't really require it, but.
We did discuss it.
Strongly suggested it would be a good idea.
Okay.
And then lot ten, because we're good with that.
We're removing ten?
Yes.
All right, we're leaving it near the mailboxes.
Right.
Same thing with eleven, that's going to stay at the center.
Do you want to keep the first half of twelve?
Actually, that's a good point.
Yeah, we didn't, I was just reading the, um, we only talked about the stairway part, not the overall grade of the recreation area.
I believe it, it is graded as a flat area, correct, the picnic area?
Yeah, so that, that'll be at about a, a five percent slope, which is relatively flat, I mean, it's, it's very comfortable to walk on a five percent slope, you might, might not even notice it, to be honest. And the intent of that is just to make sure that the stormwater from our newly created grass area is getting down into the developable portion of the site, so we can treat it.
So are you saying, Kristen, there needs to be a further adjustment from what?
I was asking if the board wants that to be called out, to say, like, this area will be no more than a five percent slope, this area is intended as the recreation area or picnic area will be at no more than a five percent slope, something like, there's a call out.
Oh, I see, so he's planning to do it, it just doesn't say it.
Yeah, I think it's shown topographically, but there's.
It's shown topographically, but not with narrative.
Correct, that was what I was asking.
Okay. That seems like a reasonable request to me, I think we should do that.
Yep.
The second part of it can go away.
Are you getting out, are you getting rid of the stairway?
Yes.
Okay.
And monumentation, I think, is at all property corners to the satisfaction of the planner, something like.
Per board input.
Yeah, per, per, per board, per board input and to the satisfaction of the planner.
Okay.
And then fourteen stays.
Fourteen stays, okay.
All right.
Keep, keep, keep. On, keep. So. Mr. Chairman, the landscaping one, what I was thinking is that instead of, that I would just reference guest parking area and cul-de-sac as well as in front of the homes, as agreed at the meeting, so that we're kind of folding a little bit of nine into the eight.
We also agree on the spacing of the arborvitae.
Oh, yeah, although would that be covered as?
I mean, it's covered in as discussed, but. I mean, you could include it in the, the, you know, the statement about in front of the houses adjacent to the guest parking and
Yep.
You could also specifically reference the spacing.
Let's see, reduce.
All right.
Okay. Here we go. I move to approve the application by Serenity Apartments LLC, represented by BH two M Engineering for Planning Board Preliminary and Final Subdivision Plan Review and Site Plan Review of a Proposal to Create a Seven Unit Multifamily Development on a nine point nine acre property at tax map twenty-one, lot twenty-six dash twenty dash fifteen near two eighty-seven Mail Road and the Business Development dash one and Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning Districts. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review, major site plan review, multifamily development standards and conditional use review, and is subject to the following conditions. Numbered one through seven on the board memo plus the following numbers. Number eight, landscaping, the applicant shall add landscaping detail around the mailbox, comma, guest parking area, comma, cul-de-sac, comma, and, so let's see, comma, in front of the homes, comma, and shall reduce the spacing of arborvitae. All as agreed and discussed at the meeting and to the satisfaction of the town planner. Number nine, recreation area, the final plans shall be adjusted to reflect that the proposed usable open space recreation area is graded to be flat with not more than a five percent slope. Number ten, new number ten, monumentation, the applicant shall install, install stone concrete monumentation as required per four oh one point one three point one D, all property corners to be set per board input and to the satisfaction of the town planner. Number eleven, lighting fixtures, the applicant shall ensure that all lighting on site, including those on the units, is downward facing shielded fixtures with minimum cutoff to minimize light pollution.
Is there a second?
Just one question, we were talking about the motion sensor on the lights.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need to specify it, or it's already meant?
I don't think so.
Okay, so.
To me, it was just the cutoff.
Okay, so I second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? All right, you have your preliminary and final approval.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate you coming out tonight.
Okay, thanks for the application. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good night, audience.